At this time, we'll open the regular monthly meeting of the Hamlet City Council. Have the agenda before us and the first item of business is invocation. And we have Bishop McDonald with us tonight to give the invocation. If you'd come up, sir.
Let everybody bow. Father, right now in the mighty name of Jesus, we give you praise and honor and glory. Father, we actually bless every member that I hear with their wisdom and their knowledge. Father, we thank you, Lord. Protect them, Lord, as they depart, Lord. Let no hidden danger come upon them. Remember their family, Lord, name by name and one by one. Father, we give you the honor, the praise, and the glory. And let everybody say, "Amen."
Amen. Thank you, sir. Counsel, we have before you at this time tonight's agenda. I'd like to take item number 10 and postpone it till next month. She wasn't able to be with us tonight. And I'd like to take number 11 and move it up right after item number four. And I'll take a motion.
Make a motion. We accept the agenda with the changes the mayor noted.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed likewise. Item number four, counsel, we have before us tonight the approval for the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes for August 15th, regular and closed session, approval of tax releases, resolution to accept Stormwater Planning Grant, approval of letter agreement for engineering services, and appointment to the planning board, and an appointment to the Hamlet ABC Board. What are your wishes on that, counsel?
I'll make a motion. We accept agenda as printing.
Okay. I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further changes, amendments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item of business will be item number, I call it 4A, but anyway, it's proclamation for the world cornhole champion, Mr. Jamie Graham is with us tonight. We're certainly glad to have you with us, Jamie. If you'd step up to the microphone just a minute. And I'm going to read this proclamation and then give it to you. Whereas nineteen-year-old Jamie Graham of Hamlet, North Carolina has proven to be a committed and focused cornhole player. And whereas Jamie began playing cornhole at the age of sixteen, and that same year began competing in cornhole tournaments. And whereas in 2017, Jamie won the state championship in cornhole. And whereas in July of 2023, Jamie competed in a championship tournament hosted by the American Cornhole Organization, played in Owensburg, Kentucky. And whereas Jamie defeated his opponent at the American Cornhole Organization's World Singles Championship, claimed the title of World Singles Champion at the World Single Season Twelve event. Therefore, I, William Bayless, Mayor of Hamlet, along with the Hamlet City Council, join the community in plowing his talented young man for all of his hard-working efforts in the sport of cornhole, and wish him complete success in the years to come.
I got one question for Jamie. You can show us your technique, or is that...
Demonstration.
Congratulations, Jamie. We're really proud. You put Hamlet on the map. The next item of business, item number six, is a presentation by Meter Sis. Mr. Christian.
Mayor, I just want to make sure...
Hold on, back up. I got one in there wrong. Item number five, comments from attendees. Do we have anybody in here that wishes to make any comment? Mr. Morrison.
Hey. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Got COVID, there's liquid sunshine, so I was waiting on y'all when we leave. Tonight is the eve month of John Coltrane Music Edutainment Fest. This will be our fifteenth year. We are using the colors ruby red because in the anniversaries, that's the standard color that's used. So we've got some nice surprises. This year, we're also adding a new element. Sixty percent of our participants are ladies. Been asked for years, so we went ahead and found a way to do it this year. We're going to have a fashion show. It's entitled Fashion with a Passion and a Purpose. So we're going to be highlighting different leaders in the community, different owners, and especially a focus on women and women musicians, too, in addition to everything we typically do. So we want to invite you all out. And our theme is always polishing the diamonds in our own backyard. Those, luckily, we got the mural. Luckily, we have a lot of history that's been finally coming around in Hamlet. We are appreciating our son. During the community event with the consultant, I pointed it out, and I've been trying to point that out for months. That's why we wanted the diversity on that committee. The trail did not have anything about Coltrane for the Seaboard Trail. Nothing. And that's one of the first national markets for the archive right here in Hamlet. So I'm told that that's in process. So I want to encourage you to expedite that, please. Other things for, I want to encourage folks, I've been having a lot of conversations, but Jay Kenneth Lee, you say, I always try to mention him. To me, he's the most unsung hero from this area. Can anybody tell me who Jay Kenneth Lee is?
Who?
Jay Kenneth Lee. He was the first black to finish Chapel Hills Law School, first black on the State Banking Commission. His lawyer was Thurgood Marshall. He's from off Charlotte Street in Hamlet. When Martin Luther King and Thurgood Marshall would come to North Carolina, they couldn't stay at hotels because of the ugly face of segregation there. They would stay at Jay Kenneth Lee's house. There's nothing like Hamlet hospitality. I think we can all agree on that. So he also groomed Henry Frye, who became the chief Supreme Court Justice, and from Ellerby, North Carolina. He also encouraged Julius Chambers, who was number three. Well, excuse me, Henry Frye was the fourth black to finish Chapel Hills Law School. Julius Chambers was number three, who became chancellor for North Carolina Central, also the senior partner with the law firm with Chambers, Stein, Ferguson, and Watt. Congressman Mel Watt came from there. Josh Stein, who's current Attorney General, his dad came from there. And Ferguson. Ferguson and Stein were known for arguing the case when Darryl Hunt got wrongly convicted in Winston-Salem and had the death penalty on him, so he finally got released. So the caliber of people we produce from Hamlet has got to be promoted from seed to shine and see. So I want to encourage us all to come out there. And when you come to the fest, Abby and Maurice came last year, so they were the first ones on city council to actually come to the Coltrane Fest in our fourteenth year. I want to encourage the rest of you, because we're edutainment, not just entertainment. So we bridge education with entertainment for this region, Sandhills, MPD. I've got to run, you know, I usually stay the whole time.
What is the date?
October 7th. Sorry about that. Thank you, Abby. Twelve noon, high noon. And, yeah, I'll leave some over here. And, but fifteenth, and the address is 1935 Gyo slash Osborne Road. If you're going down thirty-eight, coming from here, the left side is Gyo, the right side is Osborne, so we just put both. And for those that are familiar with the area, Wayman Chapel Church, right beside it is the Faith Center, outside of Cole Auditorium, that's the largest facility indoor in Richmond County. So want to come out and support, a lot of good rich history out there, too. But thank you all. Any questions or other than that? I got a partner Richmond County, Rockingham. So I hate having county commissioners meeting and this meeting the same night. But thank you all. Any questions? And Abby and Maurice know how to get there, and the rest of you, too. Appreciate it. I hope I'm not knocking.
You can sit over here if it's going to fall.
All right. I think it's there, Matt. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Do you want to leave those, or some of those? I'd be happy to take. We'll make some contact.
Is there anyone else who has comments for counsel tonight? Thank you.
Congratulations again, Jamie.
Okay, if not, we'll move along to item number six, is a presentation by Meter Sis.
Good evening, Mayor, members of councils. My name is Andy Honeycutt with Meter Sis. It's great to be back in front of you tonight. Tonight is more of a discussion around options for the city. As part of my role as a former public administrator and now a consultant to local government, we believe in the decisions being right for the community. And so it's not us necessarily bringing in one and only approach to solving metering challenges, but to really give you options that meet with your expectations, your objectives, and moving that forward in a very planned and methodical way. So just as a reminder, advanced metering infrastructure provides two-way communication down to the meter. And what that allows you to do is understand things that need to be known in the operation of your utility, such things as water leaks on the opposite side of the meter, on the customer's side of the meter. Is that meter turning and performing as it should? And then getting alerts like, you know, slow or high leaks, depending on the water parameter. It gives you seven hundred and twenty reads per month versus one read in a drive-by or a manual read, in your manual currently. So imagine the data and the ability to understand more about customers, whether it be commercial, industrial, or residential, in helping customers understand their bill and giving them a lot of intelligence around their consumption patterns. So we get those usage alerts, we get access by not only the billing staff, but also the customers through a customer portal. So now we're interacting with the customer in a much more effective way. And by replacing meters that have been long since past their prime, and we talked about that last time, we're able to bill and record usage and bill accurately. And so improving the accuracy of the reads and actually registering and recording the reads going through the meter in proper flow. And so in looking at the options for the city, they're really, we know that there was interest around a pilot, and we support that one hundred percent. We also have recommended, because of the lack of information within your billing system, doing a field survey. What is supported even further that field survey is the requirement for the city to assess your lead and copper at the service line level. That is an EPA-driven requirement. It is due by October of twenty-four, and that will require someone going to every one of your meters and assessing the service lines to that meter and outside of that meter. That report has to be submitted back to the EPA by next year. To give you an example, one of our clients, Hernet County, we're finishing up forty thousand meters in that location, and because the rule was not in place when we started that project, they've now hired and engaged an engineering firm to go back and look at all forty thousand accounts. So what we're recommending is that we do essentially two things at once, melding in that lead and copper compliance with the field survey. And what the field survey is going to allow us to do is understand those meters that we can retrofit, which is leave the meter in place and put a new register and a new transmitter and lower your cost. Or if that meter we find to be way out of tolerance, way out of useful life, then we'll go ahead and note that in the documentation and schedule that for replacement. The other piece that is essential is in locations. Locates are really, really challenging, and so as you get into a replacement cycle, we're going to bring you latitude and longitude information and put that into your billing system so that you have that available and know, moving forward, where all of your infrastructure is. So that's the field survey. The pilot program, certainly as you have expressed interest in, is putting in a quantity, a defined quantity of meters, putting up the network to get that meter read in, and then building in the software that allows you to use that information effectively. And certainly, that is dependent on the quantity. The cost is correlated to the quantity. That would use your incumbent vendor, which is Master Meter, and would build out that through system enhancement, the pilot program. The next option is procurement, creating a request for proposals and putting that out to the market and getting bids back from manufacturers and distributors, and then determining what's the best fit for your solution moving forward. And then the last, it really is an option from a meeting we had with city staff, Matt and the team, is a hybrid, where you actually can do certainly the field survey and a limited pilot under one umbrella engagement. So it really is, provides you with options to look at and consider. So the field survey, this is a great example of what we do. We have a handheld, this is Derek with our firm. Derek will go out with a handheld and take out, take on all the information, location, meter type, meter size, condition of the meter, whether that's a stopped meter or an active meter, get the meter read, and then take site photos. So we've got really good sound information within the system, and there's four thousand one hundred meters across your system. It's a pretty big system, and that's pulling every lid and looking at every meter. We'll log that relevant information, we'll conduct that lead and copper inventory, and then we'll update your billing system with all of this information. So we'll work with Southern Software, upload the information from our field survey tool, and then you've got a robust system for future planning. The cost on that, as it was presented in your packet, you see the breakdown there. It provides not only the program management, the setup, the planning, but also includes the meter inventory and then doing the data push into your system. The pilot program, we would put up one gateway to start. I've looked at the propagation study or the plan for that network. You get really good coverage with one gateway at the tank here just off Main Street. So we would more than likely need two collectors to build out your entire system, but most of the city would get coverage on the one device. So we plan and install that device on your tank. We would coordinate the integration of data between the meter data system and your billing system. We would train staff how to use the new system, and then look at and monitor the metering automation performance, making sure we're getting good reads in, that we feel good about the data flow, and that everything's working as it should. You see the program cost. This is for implementation and management of the, based on one thousand meters. I think there was a number at one time of fifteen hundred meters. That's completely up to you. We did this based on a thousand meters because it is all-inclusive of the implementation, the labor, and so forth. And then the equipment side would be a direct acquisition through the distributor, which is your legacy distributor or your legacy product. And we built in some contingency there just to make sure we've got good coverage. And you see the total of the program management installation for a thousand meters is just under five hundred thousand. Now, let me just stop there and say that a lot of the embedded cost in the pilot would not be replicated in future deployment. For example, setting up and doing a lot of the software integration, that's fairly time-consuming and requires some investment that doesn't have to be replicated in future steps. So procurement, we would come in and establish in cooperation with the city those requirements that you want to achieve, whether it's remote disconnect or getting pressure at the meter, water quality, whatever the case may be. Leak detection and pressure are essential. I think we talked about the city is somewhere around a thirty-five percent non-revenue water loss. That is high, significantly high. Generally, we see utilities in that twelve to fifteen to maybe eighteen percent. And so beginning to get a handle on your system, where your water is going, is going to preserve the capacity of your plants long-term, and it will begin to help us determine where leaks are occurring, either behind the meter or in the distribution system. We would plan on the integration of your systems, develop that RFP or request for proposals, and then conduct the vendor selection and negotiation. This is under best value. In North Carolina, we can negotiate that best value. It's not necessarily lowest bidder wins, which is good for you, because in the case of metering and AMI, you don't necessarily want the lowest bidder every time. You want the best solution. You see the cost there? That's about a four-month process to go through the AMI procurement process. And that, again, is creating the RFP, getting it on the street, reviewing the bids, and then negotiating the contract. And then last but not least is that hybrid that I mentioned on the front end, where you combine asset assessment or inventory, including lead and copper, plus your AMI pilot. So not only are you assessing your existing infrastructure and planning for future deployment, but you're also actually getting AMI into your system. And so that would involve, again, network planning and design, the system work, doing the asset inventory, and then it's really balancing the planning and execution piece that I think is of interest to the city. Can we get back to that screen? So this particular screen, this photo is of Hamlet, and I mentioned that the one reach for the network device in center of town on the tank there has really good coverage. That's your service territory boundaries, and red is really good. So you've got a really good opportunity for AMI. It's very conducive. I will tell you, in Carthage, North Carolina, we needed seven gateways. So, and Carthage is not as big as you are. So this is a really good propagation, and I think will serve you really well. If you were to do a hybrid, we would recommend starting small and slow, putting in five hundred meters, that could be retrofit or new installation, doing your lead and copper inventory and your meter inventory, and all of that coming together, again, is in that, you know, four hundred to five hundred thousand price tag. So, again, any acquisition of equipment would go straight to the distributor that would not come through us. We would be in charge of program management and the installation. So that's it. Happy to entertain any questions you may have.
I don't know what to ask.
A lot of choices.
I don't know what to ask. I have one question.
Yes, sir.
On the unaccounted full water, we're at thirty-some percent. And you mentioned that that's high, the other ones are between twelve and like eighteen percent? Well, once they got their new meters in, what did their percent of unaccounted water go to then?
That's a great question. I haven't really, we haven't gone back and said, okay, now that you're in for a period of time, where is that number?
Is that something that you could get? I mean, it seems like that would be a good selling point to other places.
It's a great point.
If one of the, if one of the things that this council was looking at was to account for the unaccounted water, which we found some by them not being metered and some meters not being read, if that eighteen percent that you're saying that some had, after they got these, if that dropped down, that, I mean, for me, it would have made a difference, possibly. I'm not saying it would have a hundred percent, but I would like to, if you could provide that information, maybe to Mr. Christian, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, which is good.
And then one other question. On the retrofit meters and the new meters, what's the difference in the cost per meter? Like, if one is going to be a retrofit and one is going to be a new meter, what is going to be the difference in the cost of that? And how much of a savings could it be if, say, fifty to seventy-five percent of our existing meters could be retrofit? And if the existing meter is in the state that we think it's in, why do you think we could even retrofit any of them?
Because we've done some discovery with your staff. I've actually been out and looked at your meters and driven your system. And what we heard is that you do, you do have meters, you have hundreds of meters that have been installed within the last three years.
No more meters?
Yeah. And so it just, it makes sense. You're going to save about fifty dollars per meter, and the labor is going to be less. So fifty on the meter and about twenty dollars, so just for planning purposes, seventy dollars a meter or about half is what you will get from retrofitting.
Okay. Thank you.
On the water loss, I can say that there is distribution side water loss, and then there's behind the meter water loss. And typically, what we plan for is conservatively four to six percent. And the way we can shore that information up is to actually take some of your meters, get them over to a test bench, and see what the performance of those meters are.
So possibly that thirty-six percent, we may see a four percent reduction in that?
Four to six, potentially eight. And because we don't know the age of your meters...
Even if it was eight, we would still be twelve percentage points higher than the highest, the highest of the average that you're seeing.
Correct. And I think the other things we're going to do is find those other meters...
So it's not going to get the thirty-six percent.
I'm sorry.
It's not going to eliminate, it's not going to find that thirty-six percent. There are other factors, like before it gets to the meter. Un-metered water usage, such as all the city's water that we use, fire hydrants and things like that.
That's correct. Yes. You can do distribution leak detection monitoring, which is on your side of the meter as well. So there are some ancillary benefits.
Okay. So best case, you're looking at, if everything's perfect, eight to ten percent is going to be higher than you've probably ever seen.
I think ten percent would be a good target, given the age of your system and the age of your infrastructure.
Okay. So still around twenty-six percent, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Nobody else coming? Thank you, Mr. Honeycutt. We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
At this time, counsel, we have a resolution. You should have a copy of it regarding the American Rescue Plan Funds for Stormwater Planning. Am I correct on that, Mr. Christian? That one? Resolution to accept stormwater planning?
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, that was on the consent agenda, Mayor.
Sir?
That was on the consent agenda, I believe?
Yeah.
So we already, okay, we took care of that. I had it on there again. Are we okay there? We already approved it. I got you. Next item of business, item number seven, is a presentation of Streetscape Design Options.
I'll just blow this up so we can see one page at a time. So, as some of you know, we recently purchased through a grant from Representative Moss that we received through the state budget in previous year, benches, trashcans, and planters. Those are in sets, and we have those. They've been, they're custom ordered, they're lovely, ready to install some. The matter I wanted to present to you tonight is the question of where those will be installed and in what way those will be installed. So between Hamlet Avenue and Main Street, we've identified twelve locations, possible location, or I'm sorry, ten, and we have twelve sets. So we have two extra in the event that we find we want to put two in one place to make a site symmetrical, or we just find that we want to put some on Raleigh Street or on Front Street. We had a couple extras. So you see the ten locations presented as red circles there on the map, and I'll kind of tab through those and show you kind of where those are just generally. There are some photos of just some general areas where some of the existing benches are. Some of these are areas where there's not benches that we thought might be a good place for benches and places where, like City Hall or the post office, where people get a lot of foot traffic and may want to stop and open their mail or throw things away in a trashcan. I don't know. But that's some of those options on Main Street. At the bottom, you see one at the tornado building. You can't really see the one because of the cars there on Hamlet Avenue, but that's highlighting the Hamlet Avenue location as well as those locations on Hamlet Avenue. So what, one of the biggest things that we are kind of faced with is which direction do we put the benches? Are they faced to the building, or are they faced towards the street? So what I'd like to do is I'd like to deploy half of the benches on Hamlet Avenue, or half of the benches, and three of them on Hamlet Avenue, three of them on Main Street, and kind of vary some of the locations. So kind of highlight the different use cases of why we would put a bench facing, on the building facing the street, or at the street facing the building, just to run through some of the pros and cons. Just to run through some of the pros and cons, if you have the back of the bench facing the street towards the building, it helps create a pedestrian corridor where you can highlight, you know, the people on the street, the, you know, if you come out of the shop, like the ice cream shop, and you want to sit down and have an ice cream, it also kind of protects the, the traffic or creates that barrier to separate the traffic from the pedestrians. On the other hand, if we place the benches with the back facing the buildings and the front facing the street, it kind of focuses the view towards the street and the traffic and people walking, you know, down the sidewalk, too. It also helps activate the storefronts. So if someone's driving by, looking at the storefronts, they see a nice new bench and planters and flowers, it just kind of dresses up the storefronts. And I know we could use some of that from time to time.
Can you get back to that picture?
Yes.
Which one's the bench?
The middle, but, to the right.
Between the green and the...
Yeah, between the green. The planter would be the green, the trashcan would be the circle on the right.
Okay.
These are a little bit...
Thank you.
Yeah.
That helps.
Yeah.
I can see.
I see both points. The only thing I see with that is that's really close to cars parking, and people can't see a car if they come and...
Yeah.
People are like, see what's going down the street anyway.
So, so, and, and you know, and I know that you all seen it, I've seen it, too, where people will sometimes pull up onto the curb if they have a longer vehicle, you know, it would stop that, hopefully. You definitely wouldn't want to be sitting in a bench if it didn't, if someone did that. But, but it's a, it's a, if you go to other places, you'll see both examples, too, and that's kind of what I want to highlight here by just deploying half of them. I will also add that we just had a kickoff call regarding our Streetscape master planning project, which we got a grant for, and we're going through that process. So I think having some of those real-world examples, not in Southern Pines or in Aberdeen, but like here in Hamlet, so we can kind of see how it looks and feels for us, I think it'll be a good start. It'll also maybe get some folks talking about, hey, we're doing something downtown, there's things going on, you know, and we may even talk to some of the business owners and say, hey, you know, we've looking at signing a bench outside of your store, what do you think? You know, and get their feedback. And also in the master planning process, we'll get more feedback about, well, how's it going? You know, it was, you thought you may want it this way, maybe you want it another way, and just, just to kind of try it. We have the benches, there's, they're ready to be put together and installed, we can always move them around, you know, we don't, we want to minimize that, which is why I think this is a good start.
One of the things I know, and it hadn't got anything to do with this, but somehow it seems to impress people, and I don't know whether anybody's given it any thought, when they lit up the area between the depot and the visitor's center at night.
Yeah.
I've heard more positive comments about that. And, you know, when you were talking about turning these benches like at the ice cream shop, and I just, I just, first one out of my mind, you create an area, and I just wondered if there's any way to incorporate some kind of Streetscape lighting besides streetlights.
I think there would be. It depends on...
People like that kind of lighting. They like the, you know, the atmosphere it gives.
Yeah, that'd be, that's really a great, that's, I think, one of the good things about going through like a comprehensive Streetscape, a plan focused on Streetscape, because you can dig into those questions. In our case, with our sites and, and our Streetscape as it currently exists, all of that's an NC DOT right-of-way, so it'd be, it'd have to be a collaborative project with like encroachment agreements with DOT, or if there were new poles, for example. But if there were just like lights, if we could somehow work like, kind of like we just did string lights, like, you know, between that and the building.
Right.
That would be a partnership with the building owners, because we'd have to have somewhere to maybe mount them, but it's certainly something to look into.
I just think particularly for businesses that are open at night, like the Axe to Grind, or what's that, Hail Marys, or something like that, you know, it kind of creates sites.
Yeah.
Creates a community.
I will say that the string light, we've got, I'm glad you mentioned that example, because that's one of the greatest return on investments that we've ever got. I mean, we went to Lowe's.
I've never seen one that made more comments about how nice that looks at night.
Yeah, we've just went and got them and put them up, and they just really, it's, it's really transformational, and all the credit goes to the folks down there that said, hey, let's try something, and...
Well, and they're going to, I think they're going to do the ribbon cutting for the brewery, I think, this weekend.
I didn't say that.
So that's going to start, and then you've got the lights at the depot, and you've got a couple of establishments that are open later in the afternoon, and you've kind of created a cluster of activity.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely something to look into. But I don't really need a vote or anything on this, I just, I wanted your feedback. My plan, as I said, is to implement half of them in kind of varying forms. I'd selected the actual sites, I'd be happy to review those with you. I think on the Main Street side, it was two, four, and six, and on the Hamlet Avenue side, it was eight, nine, and 10, so.
I like them, I just think that's too close to the cars parked there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, I, I think that with our city, it would better with them. If we had parallel parking, rather than the angle parking, I wouldn't be as concerned, but...
Another, parallel versus angle parking is another great topic, which I think we'll dive deep into in our Streetscape planning process. Because I think that would, if we had parallels, we could also add bump outs where we could have landscaping and, and crosswalks and things like that, and you can really, really ramp up the, how pedestrian-friendly an area is with something like that. Eventually, you get into like, where are people going to park, and how many parking spaces are we sacrificing, and those issues matter, too, and we got to balance that, but I totally understand your concern.
While you're on that, it's a little, little bit off-base, but it goes along with it. See, I know we've been shorthanded, but the flower beds over on Hamlet Avenue need some work done on them. They...
I believe the plants were pulled last week, but I'll have to check on that.
Okay, I haven't been over there this week at all.
Yeah.
They have been pulled, okay.
Did they dress the beds up?
Yeah, I think they were, they were pulled. And then we were anticipating installing these, so we didn't replant them with anything, so.
You know, for the safety of the vehicle, I like them, I like against the building, closer to the building.
Yeah.
To me, personally, that's the way I would feel about it. That would be cut out any kind of danger, any possibility of any accident. And I, I, parallel parking right now, probably may be the better way to go.
Yeah.
What do you think about that, babe?
I wonder if we couldn't get near as many cars parked.
Yeah.
We'd get enough.
Or what about the...
That's what City of Rockton had made.
What about the safety of the benches, people from being stolen?
Yeah, they have, they have a mounting schematic, so they'd be, they can anchor bolts into the concrete.
What about the flowers?
They're, they're all, they're all designed, I mean, they're, they're actually, they're made by a company, this is like what they do, and they're, I mean, they're pretty, pretty expensive. We wouldn't have been able to afford them without a grant, but they're designed and engineered to be mounted on the sidewalk in a way that can't be, they can't be moved.
They wouldn't be there long, bro. If they were.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're also large and heavy, I mean, they're industrial, they're, they're like what you've seen in major cities and things like that, they're very high quality. Well, we will move forward with that.
Okay. Nothing further on that? Go ahead and look at the City Lake Park update, Mr. Christian?
Yep, so I have a specific ask from council on this, which I'll get to in a minute, but just as an overview, we have an existing trail at City Lake, which is highlighted by this red line. It's a paved trail, which kind of extends off of the City Lake Park here, right on Business 74. The other two lines are just conceptual phases of construction for completing a loop around City Lake, which is something we've discussed before. We received a $400,000 grant from the North Carolina Department of Commerce, called a Rural Transformation Grant. That $400,000 is to help us construct this trail. This conversation would not be possible without that, without that grant award. The trail, the total budget, which is included in your packet, is estimated to be a little over $1 million, so we're a little less than halfway there hypothetically. And there's a second budget in there for a smaller phase, which would kind of get us closer to our $400,000 budget. However, when I was working with Commerce to sign the agreements and get the agreements ready for obligating the funds to the city for the grant, I was informed that the, the grant funds would not pay for any design, engineering, or engineering services. So what I'm requesting of city council is appropriating an amount which is included in the, in the budget there for the engineering services. I believe the engineering, design, and surveying, this is something around $130,000 roughly. I don't have it right in front of me, but I have it on a PDF, I could pull up quickly, from our ARPA funds, and that way, we can make, we will design and engineer the entire project using the ARPA funds. That would make the entire project shovel-ready and allow us to utilize the full $400,000 from RTG towards the first phase of construction.
Matt, I've got a question about on the east side of the City Lake.
Yes, sir.
Is all that property accessible? Do we have, does the city have access to make that trail, to put it there?
Yeah, so you're referring to like this area here? Or I guess maybe if you're referring to the broad area, the, the simple answer is yes. We do have some engineering, surveying, and one of the biggest, I think, constraints is going to be wetland delineation, which we have to work with the Army Corps of Engineers on. But generally speaking, if you look at the GIS and you look where the property lines are, we have plenty of land to build the trail.
But if we don't spend the 150, we don't get the 400.
That's, yeah, that's, that's correct.
That's it.
And I, I'm going to check that amount really quick.
I don't see where we have a choice to go after.
Do you think there's a reasonable possibility that we could get the remainder of the money later?
Yeah, I think, and I, I particularly think having a shovel-ready project makes you much more eligible for grants. We were lucky to get the 400,000. We, frankly, we got that because of our previous planning efforts, which identified this as a future trail area. But the, the project itself was not designed or engineered at a, at a detailed level. Like, we're going to have to do all that detail work in order to make it possible.
You're saying that the area that's highlighted in red is already constructed, right?
Yeah, the red.
Constructed and paved.
It's paved.
All right, where will we go now? To the blue or to the...
The purp, yeah, so to the blue or the purple is the question. I think that's to be determined. I would, I would, hypothetically, we do the design, the design will inform us what our budget can do. The natural trail here, which will just be clear inland, a minimal amount of boardwalk, a minimal amount of wetland incursion, will be likely more affordable. How, how far we can get, this is just a conceptual route, this is by no means a final, a final path.
You won't walk that long.
But this, we previously talked about this being some sort of a bridge, but due to the, you know, we've walked the site, what we can walk, and this is just all wetland area.
Yeah.
And...
Very wet.
And so there's really nowhere for a bridge to span and land, and no matter what we do, we're going to have to build some sort of boardwalk, raised boardwalk, or...
I think that'll look a lot nicer.
Yeah, they call it a bog walk, but the engineer, or the, you know, the architects and stuff that I've been working with call it a bog walk. But it would basically be like, like a boardwalk, you know, and it would go where there was wetland areas, it would come up, and where it was dry, it would be natural, and there'd be some variation there, but...
That's what they did in the, for lack of a better word, the swamp on the headwaters at the RCC Lake.
Yeah. Yep.
But just to give you a comparison of costs, that was $10,000.
Yeah. Yeah.
In the lake, got some of that, too.
That's what they built through, though.
They have a lot of that. I guarantee you that purple's going to be expensive.
Right, so, I mean, my expectation is that the blue will likely fit the, the budget that we have currently funded, and then with the design done, we can go out and get real true bids for firm cost, construction cost on building whatever route the purple happens to take through the design process.
What's the total distance of that?
Linear, it's a little more than a mile. Yeah, it's a little more than a mile. The, the, if you look at the, in the packet, in my staff report, or the report that I prepared, there is a full estimate for the total cost. It's the, kind of looks like this, this green header at the top, it has the linear footages there.
Cost to complete would be about $2 million.
Would we have to buy any right-of-ways for the property owners there that the property goes to the lake?
Yeah, we'll know.
Then we run into a problem with the, the boat ramp on the other side.
3,440 feet.
Yeah.
Point 65 mile.
Still got that problem.
That's for the new, so that's in, so you'd have to add the, the other, I think this says what it is.
Depends on who buys that property.
That's roughly half a mile existing, so...
So it's about a mile and a quarter.
Yeah, so about 8,000 feet, mile and a quarter. Mr. Queen, back to your point, I have contacted, there, that property is in a trust, the lake property, and I've been in contact with the owner of that trust about this project. We also had a tree fall kind of from our property onto their property, so we've been talking to them, so we have open lines of communication about that.
Has there been any thought given to, instead of going up so far and then back down, to come across with a bridge?
Yeah.
I mean, we're already looking at putting the pier back in or whatever, just a mile up in that swamp.
Yeah, so you're kind of saying in this area.
In that area, right there.
Or like, or right here.
It would make it shorter, but it would mitigate the wetlands.
Yeah.
Issues, and probably some of the cost.
Yes. It's funny you mention that, I was talking with our public works director about that this morning, as I was making this graphic here today, and I was, I was actually, I said the same thing, you know, I said, this, this hypothetical path, if the cost is exorbitant, or, you know, the survey comes back and says, you know, we're not going to allow you to encroach on this because of some rare beaver or butterflies, you know, some reason that you can't go through a particular area, this would be a kind of a fail-safe option. The only concern that, you know, it has pros and cons to everything, one of the cons to that, there's a lot of pros to that, one of the cons would be, we'd want to probably think about where we crossed, because that would essentially put a border where if you were boating or paddle boarding or something like that, you'd have trouble, you know, interacting with that. So it's kind of that, where's that Goldilocks point of how far north can we go without running the cost up or getting into some sensitive wetlands, and how far south can we go to save cost and kind of balance the recreational interest of the site?
I'm overlooking, do you have the 150 on here somewhere?
Yeah, you have to add a couple of things together. It's, it wouldn't exceed 150, that was just kind of an envelope number, but if you add the, at the bottom under where it says contingency in gray, the design and engineering services, the surveying, the permitting, and the, the wetlands identification, so all those. And we've, we've learned that, like I said, that's kind of a not-to-exceed number. I'm hopeful that we can leverage Commerce and, and beg and, and let them understand that, you know, we want to make sure that this is a good solid project that's shovel-ready for the future, and they may allow us to do some of the wetlands identification and surveying because it is attached to the construction, but they may also, if it's not in the phase that we're actually going to construct, you know, there may be, we may have to split that with them, I guess.
I've got a question about the dam. When you start at the bottom, when you come all the way around yet to the dam, how would you get across, how would you, the trail, how would you cross over the dam?
So, great question. There is existing sidewalk at the front of the park here in this area. And so, in, for the current time being, there, you would have to jog around, but we are going to have to do some work on the dam in the future. We just completed a structural assessment. It's indicated that there is some repair work that needs to be done on the dam to make sure, and we've talked about that here in our meetings, eventually we will have to do some work on the dam, and I think at that time, when we're engineering that, I want, I'm, I'm hopeful that we could find some way to cross there, but if it's not cost prohibitive, you know, we would just kind of create a natural path towards the sidewalk. And then with whatever construction work we do, create... Yeah, a, a path, yeah. I mean, ideally, we could do that. It does kind of ruin the, not ruin, but it compromises being in the nature. If you gotta walk past the gas station down to the highway, that kind of thing. But, but, but we have property all through this area. I mean, it's a little tight, but we believe that we can make it work the way it's currently laid out conceptually. And at some point, I hope that we can literally bridge this gap, probably with a bridge of some sort. But that's, that's something that we wouldn't do until we were doing work on the dam.
So we're still under the gun with the dam work?
Yeah.
Because there for a while, it was front and center, as far as if that dam failed, it would flood the street there.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything about that in several years, though.
We recently...
Still a high priority dam.
Yeah, it's what's known as, the state classifies it as a, they call it a high-hazard dam, but... Last year, if you remember, we took the lake level down. That's when we had some contractors in here. They did some boring, and we got a full comprehensive subsurface, like, structural assessment. It indicated that the, the dam itself is sound. The concrete and the concrete structure itself that's visible above ground does have some erosion issues and does need some repair. There's some cracking and some, a little bit of breaching in some areas. But the dam itself is, you know, we're going in the right direction on that. So they haven't, we've done the things that we needed to do, and we're kind of walking that path. It's just a, it's a long process.
Does any of that have any effect on that lake since it is our, basically secondary emergency water source? It wouldn't have any?
It, the trail, you mean?
Yeah, doing the trail or, or either the bridge across or...
No, not that I'm aware of. And then we already have existing trail there, so I don't, I don't, I haven't, I mean, we would have to check, and that's a good question. I'd be happy to ask and be certain, but I, I don't believe there is any conflict.
Without spillway, isn't that wide to start with?
But you don't want to put anything there anyway till they get through doing that work on the dam.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Well, what do they can do on the dam? Has the state declared it's structurally sound or?
Yeah, it wasn't, the, the state is, all they've done is say that this dam is of high consequence, basically. If it fails, it will, it will damage a lot of things, and through a visual inspection, there are some concerns. We took that information. We went to private structural engineers and got a full structural analysis. The dam is sound. It does need some repairs. Like, the, there's no subsurface erosion, there's not water undermining the, because there's a lot of subsurface engineering on those, those dam structures.
If it fails, are we responsible?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Damage...
I mean, I don't, I'd...
If they told us to...
But it runs...
I'm just saying, if we're spending half a million dollars on a trail and we got a dam that fails, and, I mean, I'm just, I'm all for this. I think that's a great idea.
I think it depends on the contract.
That damage has been on our agenda for what, over 10 years.
I mean, there's certainly that risk there. It's our lake and our dam, maintained or not, so...
They'd have to tell us to drain it before we'd be liable.
That, to me, that the dam and the spillway is really a, really be something to deal with.
Come back up here to the existing...
Trail back there, but it had that dam, that dam...
Come back up to the existing trail a minute. I had a couple of ladies come to me in the last week or so, saying that that's getting real bushy in there again, and they're getting a little bit afraid to walk through there. I haven't walked it, but...
You're talking about in this area in particular?
Yeah, it gets real bushy in there, and they're kind of...
And it's real bushy. I walked it the other day, and there's, and the drainage up there from where the memorial is at, and the people see it. It, it needs, uh, it needs looking at big time.
Yeah, that's kind of in, in this area here.
That's one of the reasons we bought that, uh, machine that we got, the Bobcat.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll take a walk.
It's a nice trail to walk, so, all the way up to America League to the back. I like, I really like walking that trail.
I like that idea, though. That's, that looks good.
But I just think spillway and the dam would be something to look into heavy.
Well, like I said, the specific ask for me tonight is, can we allocate ARPA funds to design and engineering? Because if, if we don't design and engineer the project, and, you know, the other items I mentioned, the construction can't happen, and we would basically forego the other grant. Just as a reminder, we have about a million dollars left in the ARPA fund. We have to spend, we have to obligate that money by the end of 2024, so...
That's after what's coming up for the meters.
Or, yeah, we kind of moved forward there. I wasn't sure if we were, I kind of, I needed to allocate money there too, if that's something we want to move forward on as well. I would need a motion on any... No, I think we just, we just kind of moved forward, but...
I've got a question about, we're coming up on the east side there, the east tablet. The property owners come up, if their property would start erosion coming up on our trail, walking trail, they would be responsible for repairing their land, right? Their property.
Are, are you, where exactly are you referring to? Can you repeat where you're, the location?
The question is erosion part coming from the property owners onto the walking trail.
Are you talking about the VFW?
Edge of the water, so if it started collapsing, we'd have to fix it, whether there's a trail there or not.
Are you talking about at the VFW?
No, the other side, other side.
Oh, oh.
That side, the blue side.
The blue.
Okay, I see, yeah.
And if it come up there, if it start collapsing, the property start collapsing, would, who would be responsible for putting up, for fixing that? Because the property owners would come straight to City Hall and want to know.
We already had, we've already had to fix it down behind the old sock plant down there.
Okay.
There are a couple of, like, ditches and stuff here, too.
What kind of liability would that be to the city?
This isn't helpful, but the short answer is, is it depends. I mean, what have we been maintaining? What's privately owned? You kind of have to look at it on case-by-case basis.
Case by case.
Well, and, and, you know, like any liability question, it depends on the nature of the loss. So, and, and what occurred and those types of things, so it's really just very context-driven. But I would say that generally speaking, I've walked this site, I walked it earlier in the summer. And, I mean, I walked all the blue, basically, to where this road kind of stubs over here. And this land is actually really kind of high. There'd even be enough space for, this is where there's the most space for like a picnic table or a, you know, a little shelter maybe, or something like that. But, um, but yeah, that's, that's pretty much the project in a nutshell. But going back to...
So you need a motion about the money for the...
Yeah, any, any of the ARPA funds I need a motion on because we have adopted a budget on that, and to amend that budget, a motion is required by council. And after Andy's presentation, there was no motion or anything like that. And I apologize if I, I, we kind of started moving forward, so I just kind of went along with it. But if we want to circle back to that, we certainly can.
I thought we did it several, several meetings ago.
We did a, we did a, we did a contract with them so they could, like, do the work to, like, like a general services contract. But that would, that scope of work there was the...
I thought we voted to do the, do the meter project.
Oh, we did, but at that time, we'd voted for 1,500. And I think the reality is, is we, we'd spend half a million dollars to do 1,000. So I just, we had to, I think, kind of go back to the drawing board and present real tangible options.
Up to 1,500?
Yes. But these are the options, and now we have firm cost, and we haven't, we ne, we haven't amended the budget. We, we made a motion at the time...
Shouldn't we rescind, I mean, shouldn't that motion be thrown away with, rescined?
Well, if it's for something that you know the city can't enact, there's really no contract for the manager, I think you could rescind it, but I don't know that you have to.
What would you say?
Should we simply amend it?
Yeah, amend it.
That would be easy too. And in particular, if you're adopting a new motion, you could say you move to rescind the previous authority and adopt a new motion. That'd be easy as well.
Motion to...
And I can go back to his options if we want to discuss this.
Let's finish.
We're here. I'll make a motion that we budget the money for...
All right, I've got a motion on the, uh...
For design?
On the path, the design.
Spend ARPA money.
Got a second from, uh, Mr. Sellers. Any further conversation on this?
Can I just...
All in favor, say aye.
He had...
All in favor.
I just, I would just like to... Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I was just gonna clarify, the motion, because I am gonna amend the budget, would be to cover the cost of this project, not to exceed 150,000 dollars.
Good. I'll make that motion.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'll second that motion.
And I have that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise.
Okay.
All right, I hope we got that right. Do we need to go back and look at this meter sys thing, or do we need to put it on there for next month, when you get it down where we can understand it?
I would like to wait so we can get some information about, I mean, I think it's very interesting that out of 36% unaccounted, that, that the absolute best we're gonna get is probably down to 28, which is still high, which to me tells me we got problems on the other side of the meters, too.
I think that's huge.
You're talking about the water line? Is that right?
I've had a lot of conversations with Andy, who was here earlier, about this. I wasn't particularly sold on the survey at the beginning, just to be honest with you. And the, the discussion that we have, which gets into the, the weeds of implementing meter replacement long-term, it doesn't really, it doesn't really touch water loss behind the meter, and it doesn't directly address 35% non-revenue water, you know, those, those issues that we spend a lot of time discussing. But the benefit to the inventory is having, the problem that we have now, at least with water meters, we have lots of other problems with the whole utility, but we don't have good data on what we have. And I think, and one of the things that he helped me understand is that, you know, for example, if we go to this other budget here, so he, and, and you asked a question, Mr. McQueen, you know, how much money would we save if we were to be able to retrofit? If we have an assessment done, we know which ones we can retrofit. We will have good data on that. Like, he's broken this 500, $491,000 estimate down into basically an 80/20 split, which is 80% replacements, 800, 800 of 1,000 replacements and 200 retrofits. That's a shot in the dark. And until we know what's going on in our system with the water meters, we're not gonna, we're not, that's just, I mean, it's always gonna be a shot in the dark.
We can't determine what the pro, project would cost us if we don't know what has to be changed and what has to be retrofitted.
I mean, so, I mean, my recommendation would be to at least do the assessment.
The survey portion.
And, and the lead and copper, because as he pointed out, that's required by EPA in a year from now, and it'd be, we're already doing it. So it's a very minimal cost add to mobilize those people. But that would be my recommendation if we're, and he, he said this in his presentation, but, you know, we kind of came up with this hybrid, you know, do 500 meters because it gets the gateway in. And he was saying that, you know, we would probably only need one, so we, that would get our network stood up, and we could just go in, then at that point, it'd just be replacing meters. The, the softwares would be integrated, the network would be functioning. We would just have to plug more meters in over time. I think that's a good option as well. But at this point, you know, my, I want to, I just want to move forward in some direction. But if there's other information, I think you asked a great question, Mr. McQueen, about how much are we actually gonna bring it down? And if we had firm data on that, I know in my previous position with another organization, we did a project like this, and that data is knowable. So I under, that's a great question, and I understand wanting to know it. I, I, I would like to move forward in some way, you know, as soon as council's ready to. But that's where, you know, it's up to y'all to decide how we spend the, spend the money, so...
That software price, that's gonna be just one time anyway.
That's right.
Anything to add on, it won't be any more software cost, that 222,000. Not until it has to be updated.
Yeah, it'll, there'll be some sort of annual license for, for sure. There's some sort of, like, annual fee, but... Like I said, we've got a, we've got a million dollars to spend. If we just spend 150 to get this, all the surveying done, and the, the 150 that we, up to 150, probably, hopefully less, that we would spend on the park project, that takes 300,000 out of our, our million, so it leaves 700,000.
Okay, question for you. How much do we need to appropriate for you tonight on this program?
At least 152,022 dollars.
And that will cover?
Well, it's a...
I would like to wait and get something more than I think, or at least, we're still gonna have to...
I still, I don't think we should wait. I mean, in my opinion, I think we ought to go ahead and move forward with it, because we're not gonna know what the trouble is until we start, how to make that assessment. And if you don't know how to know where the trouble is, you don't know where to fix it. So I'll make a...
And even if we down the road decided we didn't want to do the meters, we'd have that inventory done, know where our problems are.
Well, I'm, that's exactly right, and I just make a, I like to appropriate 152,022 dollars.
Yeah, I have a motion on that?
I got a motion.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise.
All right.
I don't understand.
Okay.
At this time, I have item number nine, proclamation for National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, September the 18th to the 24th. Whereas more than 51.4 million Americans can't read or write at the most basic level, while 75.1 million lack basic math skills, as well as the credentials and skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary education. And whereas every year, one in three young adults drops out of high school. And whereas American Action Forum estimates that America is short an estimated 7.5 million private sector workers across all skill levels. And whereas adult education programs contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along the continuum in their educational journey to achieve basic skills and get prepared for career in college. And whereas adult education programs in high schools and adult schools, community colleges and community centers offer low-cost, high-value programs that upgrade the skill set of our citizens. And whereas Richmond Community College celebrates Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, which is September the 18th to the 24th, 2003, and proud participant in the National Educate and Elevate Campaign, which helps our citizens learn about all of their adult education options to attain their professional and personal goals. Now therefore, I, William Bales, Mayor of the City of Hammond, North Carolina, do proclaim September the 18th to the 24th, 23, as Adult Education and Literacy Week, and encourage all people to work together to increase literacy among the residents of Hammond. All right, the next item of business will be moving to other business. City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At the last meeting, there was a question asked about the disc-off course and the status of that, and we just spent a lot of time talking about the trail. I think that will be a great amenity to that trail project. They're still in the planning phases. They've been doing a lot of tournaments this summer and other things. But the, the leader of that group, who's been before council in the past, said that they're very much still interested in doing a project here. And I was glad to hear that, but they just haven't allocated the time on it. So that's the update on the disc-off course.
Yeah, we'd like for people to bring these issues to it, but they need to continue on them, instead of letting them fall behind.
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I'm glad you brought it up, and I touched base with him, and that's the update that he provided. On September the 22nd, we're starting back up the Boxcar Concert Series. I'm gonna tell you the time, so I don't mess it up. I'm gonna look it up on my phone, 6 to 8. There's also gonna be a book signing with Shannon Haywood on the same day from 5 to 7 with her book, Hope Flies High. And we look forward to getting that event started back down at Main Street Park for the, hopefully, the cooler weather in the, in the later months of the year. The Seaboard 5K is still accepting registrations. The vendors' registration booths are sold out, so if anyone asks, there's no more. But they are definitely still accepting people for the 5K. Last year was a record year, and we hope to break that record again this year. I think we had somewhere over 300 registrants last year, and that was a great turnout and a great event. And we have already been getting questions about the Christmas Parade, which for future reference is further out, but it's on December the 7th this year. We've already been getting questions about that, so if anyone has an interest in registering for the parade or, or getting floats reserved and things of that nature, we have those forms out at City Hall, so come by, see us, and we'd be happy to take care of you. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions for the manager? If not, we'll move along to comments. Council, Mr. Martin?
Uh, I'd just like to remind everybody...
Uh, I'd just like to remind everybody that the American Legion, uh, baseball program at our memorial park is coming along pretty good with the new batting cage we've been trying to install up there. Uh, it's just in the, in the baby stages right now, just getting it laid out. But there are other projects we want to do before the next season, and, uh, it's coming along real good. They're gonna have a barbecue, uh, to raise funds for the American Legion baseball team. Uh, you'll see that announced pretty soon. I think it's gonna be in October. But, uh, I want to encourage everybody to purchase tickets and make contributions or whatever to help the program. Other than that, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Sellers?
I, I'd like to thank, uh, all the attendees come up. I would just like to reiterate what Eddie Martin said, let's support American Legion on their barbecue and let them raise the money for our program, baseball program, which has got a great history on it. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Ms. Covington?
Um, hey, listen, today I attended a Crime Stoppers ribbon cutting. They're officially opening an office over in the old Richmond County courthouse, and our, our police chief has been extremely active in trying to get Crime Stoppers. They never ceased to exist. They just kind of faded into the sunset. But they're kind of up narrow, and his wife has taken a particular interest in this program and has hosted two kickoffs to summer down at our depot and with the fire department and lots and lots of kids. And she was presented as an award for the most innovative fundraiser in the North Carolina Crime Stopper Program. So my hat's off to Chief Brown and his wife for what they've done in this program. I think it made, opening this new office and giving it a new presence in the community a, a very rewarding thing. Also, um, uh, Mr. Morrison mentioned that I did attend the John Coltrane Festival last year. I wasn't able to go until late in the afternoon, but the music was wonderful. We really had a good time. And I encourage anybody that likes good jazz. There's a lot of people who come from out of town, and there's a, just a myriad of talent there. Also, um, the ribbon cutting for the brewery is September the sixteenth. I don't know if that's Friday or Saturday. But they're going to do it upstairs.
Saturday?
Yeah, is it Saturday? They're gonna do it upstairs, and they're gonna combine it with a murder mystery program. So you go in and during the ribbon cutting, somebody disappears and they're dead. So you have to figure out who done it.
What time did you say on the sixteenth?
I'm not sure.
You don't have a time?
And that's also on their website.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it acts the grind. If you'll look on the website, it's, um,
What about, what about when the grand opening?
It's seven P M.
Are they gonna have any free samples, you reckon?
I don't know. But also on Friday night downtown, Buies is starting their steak and jazz series back. Um, from five to ten, you can go down and have a steak and, um, listen to some good music down there, too. So there's a lot of things going on downtown if you choose to avail yourselves of them, and I, I encourage you to attend. I think it means a lot to the merchants when we show up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stewart?
Um, thank you to the attendees, as always. Like to see our citizens coming out. Um, definitely want to thank the Hamlet Police Department, Chief Dennis, um, at the Ninth Grade Academy. They are having an officer that's walking the halls almost daily, which, um, helps out a lot at that high school, Ninth Grade Academy with those freshman high school students. So thank you to the police department for doing that. And also, you know, this is the third week of, uh, of, of school starting. So not only just for the Hamlet schools, but we need to pray and, and God bless our educators and our students in Richmond County. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McQueen?
Yeah, um, the area over that A and P at the back where the grass is at, if we can get-
I sent Robert a text about that this morning. Um, also, I wanted him to trim the whole area.
Don't have your office bugged up.
I swear. I went on a walk this morning, and I walked through there, and I, I thought the same thing. Yeah, well, uh, it's on our radar, and there's portions of the sidewalk that are overgrown, too. I said the whole lot, but particularly the area you're talking about, we'll take care of that.
All right. Are we, are we up to speed on our, excuse me, are we up to speed on our number of people in the cleaning department that does all that stuff, parks?
Are you referring to like the, the landscape?
Landscape, yeah.
Yeah, I believe we've filled all those positions. Yeah. I think one of them may be onboarding currently. There's three in that team. Um, we had two for a while, and I, I think that, I can confirm that via email, but, um,
Oh, I do have one other thing. Somebody texted me the other night thanking us for marking the tennis courts for pickleball courts.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. That they really had a good time with that.
On that, too.
I mean, that was like about ten o'clock. Somebody just texted me, said they were thankful that we did that, so.
Unlike Charlotte, who had a complete blowback when they turned one of their tennis courts into pickleball.
Yeah.
It was a basketball court. They cut it in half-court basketball, and the other half was pickleball. Woo!
The-
They just came unglued.
No one escapes the, the, you know, the wave of pickleball.
They got a thousand problems.
Good and bad.
Pickleball, it and one of them.
But it's very popular, and I appreciate you sharing that. It looks very nice, if you haven't seen it.
It really does. It looks really good.
You have anything else?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, the fair is in town. They've, uh, be the fourteenth through the seventeenth. And, uh, would like for everybody to come down to the fair, got the rides, and, uh, got plenty of things going on down there, a lot of good displays. Uh, again, would like to congratulate, uh, Mr. Graham and thank him for being a citizen of Hamlet to have won that championship. Uh, question, we need, September, we need to be planning with the, uh, HBDA about the Christmas on Main Street and Hamlet Avenue. Uh, we kind of have fallen apart in the last couple of years because of COVID. But, uh, we need to go ahead and get this thing planned and get with these people with HBDA and see what they want to do and then what we need to do. So we'll go from that. And, uh, I believe that that's all I had, just reflecting on what everybody else said. Um, at this time, we will move along to item number fifteen. I need a motion to go into closed session per General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A, three, six, for attorney-client privilege and personnel.
I make a motion to go in closed session.
Got a motion?
I got it.
You got a second?
Second.
What, Mr. Martin?
Did you get it?
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, don't mind.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose likewise. Can we stand in for closed session?